Let me check, I'm on, okay. We are ready. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Actually, it's interesting because it's dark tonight on daylight savings time. Usually it's been, we were starting when it's light outdoors. So, I'd like to call our meeting to order. And I have a roll call by our city clerk.
The record will reflect that all members, with the exception of Council Deputy Mayor Coles, are present.
The next thing on our agenda, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and the Invocation. And today, we're going to welcome Pastor Paul Straub of the Hope Church of the Nazarene. Welcome, sir, pastor. And we will, please remain standing after the pledge.
Amen. You please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's pray. Lord God, we want to thank you so much for the ability we have to be able to gather together in this beautiful facility to dialogue and discuss and even debate the issues that are close to each person's heart. I want to thank you for the council members who are serving, and we pray that you give them wisdom and understanding and discernment. Give them patience as people share those issues that are close to their hearts. We thank you for this council chamber having so many different age groups represented and people groups represented. They are here because there are things close to their hearts. We ask that you would give them understanding and patience as they try to share their hearts' desire. I ask that everything would be done in order and all that is said is said with respect and honor. We pray that everything that is done for the City of Vista to be able to move forward with a spirit of unity and a spirit of cooperation. When we stop and think how blessed we are, we look across what's happening in this world. And we truly are blessed to be here now at this time. I ask that everything that is done here tonight is done in the spirit of cooperation and a desire not to fulfill personal agendas, but to go forward for the betterment of the city and the community. And I ask all these things in the name of the One who hears and answers prayers. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So I'll have the approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda.
And we had a closed session with our city attorney, Darryl Piper.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session on the real estate item CS1 on today's closed session agenda. No action was taken. There is nothing to be reported.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations, and I'm going to come down there and do it. The first one is the City of Vista's 50th Anniversary Photo Contest Awards. So I'll come down there. Okay, I have some awards and some checks for some people here. So as part of our year-long celebration of Vista's 50th Anniversary, the city held a photography contest open to students and adults. The theme was "What Makes Vista Great." Over 100 entries were judged by Ken Jques and Robert Bennett, who selected the top six entries as well as a number of photographs to be featured. Some of the works are on display in the lobby outside of the city council chambers, and the rest are accessible online at cityofvista.com. So tonight, we're honoring the top six photographers in the competition, starting with the adult division. And our third place winner is Scott Coulson, who captured a beautiful image of downtown Vista. Is Scott here? Come up, Scott. Is I saying that right? For her photograph of kite sculptures in downtown. So Leslie, is Leslie here? And first place goes to John Jacobs for his very colorful entry. So is John? Congratulations. Oh, wait. I'm sorry. I forgot. Okay, so we've also seen some great entries from the young people and students in our community. Third place is Richard Covedo for his photograph of the gazebo in Bregolteras Park. Congratulations to you. Well done. Second place is Hannah Webster for her excellent capture of actual albums from Standard's Record Store in Vista. And not only is a first-place photograph an amazing photo of a kite sculpture in Vista Village, but it was also made by the youngest entrant in the competition. First place goes to Leah Schoffstall. Did I do it right? And Leah is eight years old. This looks like it's a check on there for you for first place, so don't lose that, okay? Or you're going to get your picture taken. How about you stand in front? Here, hold this. Wait, hold this. Let's do this right. I'll hold the check. Okay. I love it, I love it. So I want to thank you all, to all the entrants in the competition for helping us celebrate what makes Vista great. Thank you to our judges and our contest sponsors, Daytron, World Communications, Atomic Investments Inc., and Watkins Manufacturing, and they are the ones who gave the cash awards. So I want to thank all of them and thank all of the photographers and everyone that entered the competition. So it was great, so thank you. The next presentation on our agenda is Beth Duncan of Rancho Minerva Middle School as Vista's Big Give Coordinator, and she's here along with her student team, and they're going to speak to us, so come on up.
Good evening, council members. Amanda Rigby, John Aguilera, Cody Kimbell, and Mayor Judy Ritter. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We are the few of many team members for Vista's Big Give. We are here tonight to share you with some exciting information that involves K through 12 students, staff, school districts, citizens, and the City of Vista. Three years ago, the City of Vista joined together for a citywide event called Vista's Big Give, organized by teachers and students of this community service. This community service opportunity benefited a Make-A-Wish Foundation of San Diego and the children they serve.
The mission statement of the Make-A-Wish Foundation is to impact the lives of children with life-threatening medical conditions. By granting their wish, we can bring them hope, strength, and joy, no matter how big or how small their wish may be. In 2009, our first Big Give sponsored four-year-old Kurt and four-year-old Ashley. Kurt battled with Wilms tumor, and he wished to go to the Nickelodeon Hotel and get slimed. And Ashley battled with leukemia, and she dreamed of going on a Disney vacation with her family. Our first collection brought in $45,000, which was enough to cover both Kurt and Ashley's wish as well as many other Wish children. And in 2011, our Vista's Big Give sponsored Molly and Justin. Justin, or Molly, was diagnosed with cancer, and she wanted to be on the Disney television show Shake It Up. And with only, at only five years old, Justin was diagnosed with a heart defect, and he wished to go to Disney World. And our second collection also brought in $45,000, which was enough to cover Molly and Justin's wish as well as many others.
Throughout the collection period, we realized we were making it possible for a child facing long hours of medical treatment to experience the hope, strength, and joy that is the power of a wish. For us, this life-changing experience has brought us here today in hopes of achieving even more. Over the past three months, we have started planning our third Big Give, and we have realized that an important step in this process is to ask for your support. Make-A-Wish is currently in the process of selecting our children that will be the faces of this campaign. In order for their wishes to come true, we need your help. First, we ask for your blessing. And second, we need your connections within the city and our community. In order for you to become elected to the city leadership team, each of you needed to ask for help and support. As students within the City of Vista, we need your help and support, both emotionally and financially. We wish to personally challenge you to help us by writing a check of support and asking others that you know to do the same. We are working hard to include and inform the entire City of Vista to help us make Vista's Big Give an even bigger success than before.
Together, we can make a huge difference, not only in the lives of our Wish children, but in our lives as well. We appreciate your time and look forward to any ideas or suggestions you may have to rally the Vista employees, businesses, cities, social groups, and elected officials to donate. Wish Week is coming up February 3rd through the 13th, 2014, in the City of Vista. We will be working hard within our schools to raise money for our children. In our fine Vista schools, our teachers encourage us to speak up about our passions, hopes, and dreams. We're passionate about Big Give, and we hope you feel the same. For our dream is that we can exceed what we collected the past two gives, working together with respect, trust, and collaboration.
The collaboration between us as high school rivals is unprecedented, and we are proud that we can put aside these rivalries to join hands and hearts for these children. Already, we have started to plan the key events that will help drive this campaign. For the second time, Vista, Mission Vista, and Rancho will have combined winter dance and with the proceeds benefiting Big Give. In addition, the middle schools are also planning a combined dance to benefit this worthy cause. Other exciting events include a district-wide movie night, a walkathon at Vista High School on February 6th, a combined dance show at Mission Vista High School on the 10th, and we are working on an event consisting of Vista and Oceanside Fire Departments for a Monday night football game at Rancho Buena Vista High School on February 3rd.
We are also planning our first Big Give golf tournament to be held on February 10th at the Shadow Ridge Golf Course. So if you golf, plan on getting a team together. Finally, we have scheduled the Vista's Big Give check presentation and celebration on February 18th from 6:30 to 7:30 p.m. Students and teachers from each high school, middle school, and elementary schools will work together to celebrate our efforts and present a check to our Wish kids and their families. We want to invite all of you to come and celebrate with us, and you will get to meet our Wish kids along with the rest of us for the first time. Look for a personal invitation to the event, and as VIPs of our city, you will get the best seats in the house.
Please take the time to think about how you can help us inform and involve the community. In fact, if you have specific connections that you can make on behalf of Vista's Big Give, we would really appreciate it. Please keep your contact cards and email us with questions, connections, or to volunteer at one of our many events throughout the city.
Our slogan is "Many Hearts, One Community, Vista's Big Give." We know that each and every one of you have committed your time and energy to the great City of Vista, and we want everyone to be a part of the most memorable event that will ever happen in the city.
Thank you for helping the students of Vista make our wish possible. We look forward to your help, and we appreciate everything that you can do to bring this message back to your friends, your business connections, and to the community of Vista. We would like to return in February to share with you the many successes of our Big Give events. As you might remember, the last time we were here, active council members shared with us their personal donations for Big Give. It was not only appreciated, it was truly inspiring to know our city council members and leadership team helped us to do something incredible for two extremely deserving children. On our own, we can make a difference, but together, we can make a big difference. Many hearts, one community, Vista's Big Give.
If I wanted to give you a check this evening, are you going to be staying for the meeting? Or are you leaving?
We're staying.
Excellent. See me afterward. I have a check for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I guess we're going to move on. But we probably will all, I'm sure we'll all donate checks. We all have done that in the past, so... Did you say you were coming back in February for that? Yes, okay. Okay, so then, we're moving on. We're going to go with a consent calendar here. The recommendation, oh, brother, I can't talk tonight. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk's secretary, and items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the consent calendar. So with that, do I see, are any of these? No, nothing removed. Does any, do I have anything removed from our council members? Then I would entertain a motion.
I will move that we adopt the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes.
Will the city clerk note my no vote on item C4 and abstention on part of item C2 for the November 13th, 2012 meeting, regular consolidated meeting minutes?
Okay, so that motion passes unanimously with those corrections or those notes. The next thing on our agenda is our discussion item, and the first discussion item is the Alcohol Beverage Control ABC Licenses, Conditions, and Procedures. So, Ally, you're going to take that? Our assistant city manager will take that. Ally Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The item before you, as the mayor indicated, is a discussion about how the city conditions and moves forward with alcohol beverage control licenses within the city. Management analyst Cheryl Mast will provide a staff report, and then we're available to answer questions.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. The sale of alcoholic beverages is regulated by the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, or ABC. City councils are given the right, under state law, to provide input to the ABC for new license applications, and the Vista City Council has exercised that right for more than a decade by requesting mitigating conditions. Although the ABC weighs council input, the department is not obligated to apply requested conditions. The standard list of mitigating conditions changes periodically as state laws are updated. Certain conditions become codified and are no longer necessary to be applied against a new ABC license. Until staff receives direction from the city council to update the city's list, Vista's letters of protest contain all original mitigating conditions, even though some have already been codified into state law. Recently, staff received notification from the ABC of a change in state administrative philosophy affecting their application of Vista City Council's requested mitigating conditions. Going forward, the ABC will apply three criteria to consideration of conditions. One, the type of business operation. Two, the premises upon which the business is located. And three, the ownership of the business. The ABC will also require a basis upon which to receive a protest, such as the applicant business is located within a high crime area or the location is within an area that is over-concentrated with ABC licenses. In short, the ABC will no longer apply local government's requested standard conditions without adequate evidence of the need. Additionally, the ABC has determined they will not apply any condition which they would not be able to enforce. Staff seeks council direction and offers the following options for consideration. One, authorize staff to select appropriate conditions on a case-by-case basis. Under this option, staff would determine which conditions would be appropriate for each ABC license application and include selected conditions on letters of protest to the ABC. Should the ABC not apply all requested conditions, staff could utilize the appeal process if the situation warranted such. Two, create a minor use permit category that would be required when applicants apply to sell alcoholic beverages. Currently, some businesses require a special use permit, and the planning commission determines applicable mitigating conditions. A new administrative minor use permit process would apply to any ABC applicant not already required to obtain a special use permit. This provides an opportunity to apply the city's standard ABC conditions, and city officials, sheriff and code enforcement staff, would enforce the conditions. This would be in addition to an ABC letter of protest and would provide local control of enforcement of all conditions as an enhancement to the ABC's enforcement of conditions applied to the ABC license. A new minor use permit process would increase the workload in community development and potentially for the sheriff and code enforcement departments as well. The fee for an MUP is $2,036. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer questions.
Okay, do I have any speakers from the council? We don't have any speakers, but it's to the council here. Amanda, council member Rigby.
Thank you. I would just say that I would be reticent to adopt staff's recommendation number two, instituting another minor use permit category that would increase fees on our businesses by $2,036. So I would, at this point, at this juncture, I would prefer staff's recommendation number one, doing a case-by-case basis. I wouldn't want to put any more burden on our businesses with those additional fees. So if we can, my understanding is that if we do it case-by-case, that's not going to incur additional fees, correct?
That's correct. Okay, council member Aguilera.
Yeah, I have to concur with Councilwoman Rigby on that. But I do have a question about the staff recommendation one. So what extra time or effort is this going to cause staff if we go that route where each is going to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis? Is that something already that's being paid for? How are we paying for that, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Just through staff salary. It's a normal process that we utilize to collaborate with the sheriff's department and determine what conditions exist for each business applicant.
So if I had a business that wasn't going to be selling alcohol, and I had to get a permit for that, is there a fee that has to get paid for that? A permit fee?
If the business wasn't selling alcohol?
Yeah, let's say just another, just, I don't know.
Any type of...
Business license, you mean?
Some sort of a business license, yeah. Thank you.
Well, the business license fee would exist. Whether or not any additional permits applied would be based on the zoning and whether or not the use was allowed in the current zone or if it required a special use or a minor use permit.
Okay, so we don't ask business owners to pay extra for that? So this, so it is covered by salary and all that?
The ABC process right now is cover, is a, there's a minor fee, but no, for the ABC, there isn't. Excuse me, I was thinking of the cabaret license. There is no fee that the city applies for the ABC license review time at this point.
Okay. All right, I'm good with staff recommendation one then. Thank you.
Council member Campbell.
So I have a couple of questions, and I wanted to discuss maybe a couple of alternative options besides just option one and two here, maybe kind of a mix of the two. So there's other communities in the county right now that are looking at or have adopted what's called the deemed approved. what's called the deemed approved ordinances that goes a little bit outside of the scope but kind of fits into this, as well as looking at a potential option for a streamlined minor use permit process, which would be a little bit different than what we have proposed here with the $2,000 charge, but applying some of the same criteria that ABC utilizes in terms of establishing the conditions for the business, the location, whether it needs the public convenience and necessity to determination by the body here or ABC, maybe creating an option where we can have a streamlined, very low-cost, $100, $200 permit for businesses that would essentially have the same effect as this minor use permit process here, to where it would allow us to have the local control and not have to go through the ABC appeals process, which is a very convoluted process. If you look at page 10 of 11 in the exhibit, there's a very lengthy process, and even then, that's putting a significant burden on businesses that the city would appeal to the ABC because they would need an attorney, they'd have to go through this very long process in terms of going through the administrative hearings and any potential appeal after that. So what I would like to look at, the potential, is creating that sort of streamlined, low-cost, not very burdensome to most, every business that would come in, whether it's a corporate store, whether it's a location where it's below the crime average and not over-concentrated, but looking at being able to go through the full minor use permit process for businesses that are in high-crime census tracts, so it's areas that are high crime in the city, over-concentrated areas within the city, so that it would give us as a city the option to go through that more stringent review process for the minor use for those types of locations, but allow us to get the same effect of the minor use for businesses that are applying for licenses that don't meet those criteria for that more enhanced examination, but would take the ABC's interference out of the process, not having to go through the appeal, not having to subject the businesses to that, but allow us to impose the conditions on those businesses the same effect as a minor use permit, if that makes sense. Is that something that the city manager?
Just want to clarify, what you're proposing is a low-cost proposal for businesses that don't have any issues, but the businesses that might be in high crime or over-concentrated would then go through the normal minor use process that's listed out in the agenda report. Is that correct?
Essentially correct. I don't know specifically what those defining, separating criteria would be between what would be subjected to the streamlined process or a more stringent minor use permit process, and I think that's something that we can discuss maybe now or at a later time. But essentially, I think that the biggest ones that stand out to me are over-concentration, crime rate, and the type of business, whether it's solely an off-site sales of hard liquor general license, or whether it's an on-site beer and wine license, which is going to be a little bit different in my mind. So is that something that would be feasible to look at doing this sort of proposed umbrella?
It might be helpful to have Mrs. Zimmerman talk about the minor use process.
Sure. If the council desires, we could look at establishing a different criteria and a higher level of review based on certain parameters. The minor use permit process fee, however, is, it's over a decade old. I think once we establish, if we were to establish a more streamlined process but applied, the amount of staff time that goes into the business coming to the development services counter, the review that happens with the planners, sending it to, for review from the city manager's office, law enforcement, possibly code enforcement, economic development, we may find that the fees are very similar to what the current minor use permit fee was, since that was established back in 2002. But it's something that we could look at, something that's a little bit less maybe restrictive for businesses that aren't in high crime or over-concentrated areas, but we would need to establish some type of regulatory appeal or permit so that there's teeth behind the enforcement for the sheriff's department and code enforcement. So we'd have to have it in place in some way that's very similar to the minor use permit.
Right, so it sounds like from the other two comments from the council members here, my colleagues, that the cost might be one of the factors, as well as the effort to go through this. The problems that I've seen in the past with ABC is they take the application or the protest from the city, and they kind of set it aside and put what they want on there, especially after the new process that they're coming through with the state with. So I think from a local control-type perspective, if there's some way where we can implement a regulatory permit process that's not onerous, that's not cost prohibitive and burdensome to applicants, that we can wind up saving staff time from having to go through appeals to the ABC with an unknown outcome in the end anyway. And then the other thing that I think's important to mention about the ABC appeals process and their conditions processes, after a certain amount of time, those businesses can protest to the ABC that those conditions be repealed and removed. And could you maybe describe a little bit about that particular process, if you're familiar with it, and how that would work, without having our own local regulatory control? So even if we're successful in applying the conditions the city requested or the council requested through the ABC, and they impose those conditions, at some point, two years down the road, or three years, that business can protest to the ABC showing that they don't have any violations of ABC, and then the ABC will potentially remove those conditions or lessen those conditions. Is that correct?
In my experience, I've been processing ABC applications for over three years now. I have had several businesses petition the ABC to have conditions removed or modified. The city generally works with the applicants and with the ABC. Some we've agreed to, some we have not. I've never heard it called an applicant's appeal. They petition.
A petition or protest.
Yeah, and then this, and it comes back to the city and the sheriff's department. We provide input to them. Even recently, that did not change, even with their recent administrative philosophy change. Just less than a month ago, we had one that we, that petitioned, an applicant petitioned the ABC for removal of certain conditions and modifications to certain conditions. The city agreed to some, and the city did not agree to others, and the ABC upheld what the city's wishes were.
But they're not required to uphold on those petitions what the city agrees with or disagrees with based on, they could disagree with the city even at that point, if I'm correct on that?
They probably could, yeah. To date, they have been very collaborative in that process.
Right. So I guess my concern is that if we don't go through with an option similar to option two, creating a local control, a local enforcement option, that even if a new applicant comes into a high-crime area, the ABC applies some conditions, doesn't apply others that the city wants, even on a protest from the city, then a couple of years down the road, the holder of the license could petition the ABC to have even those restrictions modified. So it seems to me like a local enforcement measure would ultimately save the city staff time and say, and allow the council to have more direct influence and control over the conditions that are applied. Would that be a fair assumption to make?
I'm not sure about the staff time. There have been very few instances in the time I've been here where we'd have, we've had to go through the appeal process. I'm not quite sure. It would really be on a case-by-case basis in terms of the, whether or not staff time would be saved, but you're correct that if we had a minor use permit in place, we would have more local control.
So I guess the question of the other council members is, would we be able to look at something that was a little bit different or a very specific special-type permit or enforcement measure just for ABC license locations versus the standard minor use permit? Being able to look, go forward with creating an enforcement and regulatory local control option that didn't have the $2,000 price tag attached to it? Maybe that's something we would be able to do at that point.
Council member Aguilera.
I have a question. So my understanding on option one is that we would be looking at some of those, like if a business wanted to go into a high-crime area, that that would be something that staff would look at and determine that, make the recommendation that we wouldn't allow an ABC license there. Is that not true?
I'm not quite sure that we can disallow the license, but what we can do is identify specific conditions that we would like the ABC to apply to that license. A lot of times, if you're in a high-crime area, you may be required to get a special use permit anyway, in which case we could apply specific conditions that ABC may not enforce, but we can enforce ourselves. It's really those businesses that wouldn't, where an SUP wouldn't be applicable, that this process is something that, that'll be new to us.
For the city, it's a request to the ABC, and it's up to the ABC at their discretion whether they want to place those conditions on or not. Right. I, the only thing is, I have a hard time duplicating what's, I mean, because this is what happens in our state all up and down, is we create more and more laws, and a lot of it's duplication of current laws, and so I do hesitate. I mean, I think you have some good ideas, but I hesitate in creating, you know, doubling up on the laws that are already there, and we already have an organization that's going to monitor this, so I'm not thoroughly convinced yet. Thank you.
Council member Rigby.
I agree with Councilman Aguilera that it seems that some of the items that we're discussing are already going to be dealt with in option one of the case-by-case basis. As far as enforcement goes, I'm not opposed to hearing an alternative. However, I still disagree with more layers of regulation or permitting and any increase in fees. So I'm not sure how instituting another category of a minor use permit is not going to incur another layer of permitting or fees. So that would be my concern. I mean, if it's, if we can do something that's going to have the enforcement in the teeth that, as a city, we want to see, but it's not going to be burdensome or cumbersome or costly to our, to our businesses, because that's what we don't want. I don't want to see any more cost incurred by the businesses. So I kind of see where you're coming from, but on the other hand, I don't want any more costs, so we would have to determine what staff could come back with.
Council member Campbell.
Yeah, I agree. That's what I was bringing up was, maybe there's a way, and this is a question maybe for our city attorney, to, for those establishments that are requesting or in the process of getting an ABC license, where there's a separate category, either it be a business license or just an ordinance that we place in effect, that conditions the acceptance of a business license or some other enforcement measure, that we can keep the local enforcement or enactment of conditions, because working with the ABC, I think the example on page two is very telling, that, you know, even when the applicant accepted the conditions and submitted their application with those conditions from the city, the ABC basically ignored most of them and set them aside, and that was an SUP process in that particular case as well. But some of those are enacted with SUP and some are not. So my concern and point about this entire process is, what option do we have in creating a, whether we want to call it a minor use permit for ABC locations, or a regulation or ordinance, what options would we have in effect to just say, if the location is applying for an ABC license, the city has the ability locally to apply conditions that staff brings forward or are approved by the council, that we can either say it's a separate type of permit that's going to have a $0 price tag and it's just part of the business license, or what legal avenues do we have to do that with outside of the current minor use permit process?
Well, I think that we could, Councilman Campbell, that we could add another category of minor use permit. That's probably the most effective way, because you need something that can be revoked if you're going to be able to enforce it. Currently, all of the off-sale liquor requires a special use permit, so we already have all of those tools in place for everything except restaurants, and I suppose it's potential that there could be one or two items that would also apply to the breweries, but if you look down the list of things here, we have ordinances that cover many of these issues already, so for something like restaurants, I'm sure we could create a very short set of standard conditions that would be applied through an SUP. What the total cost of that would be, obviously, is something that staff would have to come back, and whether you want to charge it or not is within the council's discretion.
Okay, that was my question, is whether or not we can just put a basically no price tag to it. My whole goal in this is looking at it as, how can we, as a city council that represent Vista residents, apply our local set of conditions that our residents are accustomed to and want, whereas the ABC applies a different standard, and they aren't local, they're not in the community, and if it goes on to appeal, it could be, and it takes it out of our hands. So with the SUP process, looking at the Bevmo application, why weren't these conditions then applied into the SUP process? Is there a separation between the two?
They may have been applied on the SUP. We were dealing specifically with the ABC license and what we had agreed to with Bevmo in terms of putting forward as our protest to the ABC license. The SUP was completely separate and included many of these conditions and a few others.
Right. And I didn't remember going through that entire process and looking at that, but I think this would allow us to maintain local control, simplify, keep a streamlined process, so maybe there's that third option that's not in here, that staff could report back some options that wouldn't be necessarily burdensome to the businesses and the applicants, but would allow us to have that control for enforcing conditions on the license for all types of businesses, not just the ones that need an SUP.
Anybody? I was looking at the, on the one where you, it's case-by-case basis, when you listed in the, in these exhibits here, exhibit one, and you listed all these different businesses, all these different things, would that apply to on a case-by-case basis? Are those the regulations that would apply on a case-by-case basis?
So that is the list that ABC currently has for each type of license, and what we would do, generally now, we go through the entire list with the applicant and apply most, if not all, of them with the, and the applicant is in agreement with us that they're okay with these conditions, and we ask for those to be applied to the ABC license. What we would do under option one is take into consideration the location, the, any elements of crime or over-concentration, and take into consideration what we're seeing from the ABC, and perhaps only apply, or ask to be applied, a few of the conditions that we know that are the higher priority items. If the ABC comes back and doesn't apply all the city's requested conditions, we would have the option to go forward with the protest procedure, or we could remove our protest at that time.
But as Councilmember Campbell is saying, do we have no teeth to enforce any of those regulations then? Is that, is that the issue?
Well, under the current, under this thing, they, or under the current procedure, we don't have the teeth because the ABC is enforcing the conditions that are applied.
And if they don't enforce them, can, you know, can the city say, well, you signed to agree to these things? Is there any way, do we, can we enforce those, or we cannot at this, under, on number one?
Under, number one, we wouldn't be able to. We would need to establish some type of permit process that would then allow us to revoke the permit and enforce the items that are listed on the permit.
Council member Rigby.
I wasn't sure if you were going to try to clarify something there.
Actually, Ms. Mast was just clarifying that again. Actually, Ms. Mass was just clarifying that again. If the business requires an SUP, we would apply those to the SUP, and there's no back and forth with ABC. But it's, it's those businesses that wouldn't require an SUP, where if it's not a condition of the ABC license, we can't have it enforced.
Right. Now, just for a point of clarification, the ABC will apply the three criteria that you had mentioned earlier, which are the type of business operation, the premises upon which the business is located, and the ownership of the business. Now, those are all criteria that we already, as a city, look at when we're looking at these anyway, correct? So, that's in sync with the ABC. Am I right? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. But then the other ones are optional. I mean, we could say, we need you to do this and this, and then they can say, oh yeah, we'll do that, and then later not do any of it.
We can request it to the ABC, and the ABC can choose whether or not they want to apply those conditions.
But lately, they're not enforcing them, so they're not applying.
Lately, they're not applying all the conditions, and so the only alternative for the city at this point in time is to protest the application and go through that process.
If, yeah, if the ABC applies the condition, they will enforce the condition. If they don't plan to enforce it, they won't apply it.
And would it still apply to the city, then? No?
No.
Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
I just wanted to make a brief follow-up to the mayor's comment, that I think the big question here is, with this, is that with the ABC, we're allowing it to just go out to an outside agency. It's up to them whether or not they want to enforce the conditions. They're understaffed. Their enforcement is very spotty, historically, from my experience with them, dealing over the last 10-plus years in that, in this sort of field. And the second part of that is, that it's very spotty of a record of whether they accept our conditions, whether, depends on the staff that you get, and who's working there in the local office, as to whether they're going to apply the conditions and accept the ones the city requests. And in my opinion, and what I think is, that we, as a city, and the city council, being here in the city where the license is going to effect, ultimately have better judgment in the terms of what conditions should be applied to that establishment than an outside state agency would on applying conditions. And then, most importantly, if the conditions aren't there, they're not going to be enforced. And even if they are there, relying on the ABC to enforce those conditions. So I think it's a much smarter thing for us, as a city, to put into an effect some sort of regulatory process, where we're not, as Councilmember Aguilera said, I don't think we would be duplicating efforts. We're merely creating it to where we can enforce the conditions that we're requesting. And if, maybe staff could correct me, but those conditions, if they're going to be imposed, could be enforced by other law enforcement agencies as well, depending on how the ordinance or permit would be written. Would that be correct? But I think the main thing would be that we can enforce it and revoke the permit if they're violating the conditions that we, as a city, would put on.
Councilmember Rigby.
I see Councilmember Campbell wanting to come in somewhere between door number one and door number two, door number one and a half. Is that even achievable, that we want to create a minor use permit with the particular caveat that we want for these types of businesses, but that will not be burdensome, an additional layer, or bear any cost to our businesses? Is that something that we can do, given the amount of staff and agency time that that will take? Because, again, I'm coming down to additional layers of government and cost to our businesses.
Councilwoman, I would refer to what the city attorney said earlier. It would create another layer. There would be a cost that staff would identify based on the time it takes to process, but it is up to the city council's discretion whether or not you want to establish any fee and apply it. But we'll let you know what that cost would be to us.
Well, my question is, you've already, you've already come with, with this option of the minor use permit with already estimated, you have evaluated the time and energy it would take for staff to apply these, and monitor these, or put them together. So the cost estimate was over $2,000 per permit. I'm not sure how we'd come in any less than that. So, I mean, I'm not hearing how we'd come in any less than that.
Councilmember Rigby, if I might, the current minor use permit at $2,000 is a permit that typically involves considerable effort on the part of the planning department, including the review of plans and things like that. In my view, those would not be essential characteristics of this type of minor use permit. The minor use permit, if that were the way the council directs us to look, we would probably come back with something that is very keyed to these various categories that are already in the report. Basically, something that is pre-established, ready to go. And in terms of the cost, currently, all of the staff work that's involved in working with the ABC and the sheriff is not charged for in any event. So, I'm not sure that if costs are identified to the minor use permit, that they're any different than the costs that we're already absorbing, and that therefore the council might choose to waive them or make them relatively modest.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, with this discussion, and with what the city attorney has said, I would, I would not be opposed to having, perhaps, staff come back with a third alternative for us to look at in the future, before we decide this, this issue.
Okay. I would, is that a motion?
I will make a motion that we ask staff to come back with a third alternative, taking into account the discussion we've had this evening.
I'll second that. I can't do that?
No, no, I'm going to ask a question.
Okay, what?
With this third alternative, are you looking at costs as well, as part of your motion?
I am concerned with cost to our businesses.
Okay, so staff will go back.
But I can't put a dollar amount out there.
I understand. Staff will go back, will look at a third alternative, and will identify the time it takes on this modified, what might be a modified procedure, and come back with a recommendation. And we'll also look at the existing Exhibit 1, and make sure that the conditions that we've looked at, or that have been in place since 2008, still stand the test of time.
Before we vote, if I could just ask one question to the city manager, to include in that cost analysis, is looking at the costs that our city attorney briefly mentioned and hit on, was the time it takes for staff to protest an application to the ABC, to go through that process that we have in place now, and maybe be able to compare the two, and if they're comparable, just being able to go forward in terms of the way we're doing it now, in terms of cost, and just being able to have a better picture of the whole process.
We'll try to do that. We haven't been through a full protest, as you know, but we'll, we'll attempt to do that.
Yeah. I just wondered why we're analyzing that one. We've had, I mean, very few of those, so I don't know that it evens a, you know, a thing to think about. But, okay. So, is, and, do we need to vote on that? Yes. Okay. So please cash your votes. Reporting on Amanda's motion, Councilmember Rigby's motion. Didn't, there's no votes. There's no results. We'll try it again. Okay, everybody, please vote again. Oh. We're good. Okay, motion passes. So that will come back to us, then. When will that come back? Can we know that?
Likely in January.
Likely in January. Okay. Okay. So, with that, we'll move on to our next item, which is another discussion item. It's our fiscal year 2013-14 first quarter financial report, and that will be Dale Nielsen.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Dale Nielsen. I'm the Director of Finance and City Treasurer for the city of Vista. Before you tonight, I'm presenting the first quarter financial report for the three months ended September 30th, 2013. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expenditures are within budgetary expectations. Exhibit 3 on page 10 provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of September 30th. At September 30th, the general fund has received about 14.9% of its total budgetary resources. Now, being at the end of the first quarter, not receiving 25% of our budget at this point in time is not unusual, because we have several large revenue items for the general fund that we don't receive until later in the year, such as property tax, motor vehicle and loop property tax payments, a few of our franchise fees. So, seeing that the amount at 14.9% is nothing unusual or to be concerned about. Also, in addition, a number of revenue items that we receive in July and August on a cash basis, as part of our normal auditing and year-end closing process, get accrued back into the prior year, because that's the year that they were earned. Exhibit 5 on page 15 presents similar information for general fund expenditures. At this point in time, the expenditures are at 17.6% of the total appropriated amount for the fiscal year. There are a number of recommended operating budget adjustments at this time. All are funded with increased revenues or used reserves, and therefore have no negative impact on the estimated year-end fund balance. Detailed discussion on each of these items can be found on Exhibit 2, on page 8 of the report. There's also a number of CIP budget adjustments, most of them having to do with the closing of projects that are, were found during the review of, on, you know, capital project program, you know, when we were preparing the 13-14 CIP budget. All of the budget adjustment recommendations, the resolutions for those, can be found on Exhibits 9, 10, and 11 of the staff report, beginning on page 19. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Do I have any questions? I don't have any speakers. If no questions, then, Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question about the security pole cameras. Did we purchase, it says that we purchased some cameras or something in 2006. Do we purchase those and not use those, or do we purchase them, use them, and they're just outdated now?
I, I'll answer that.
Okay, thank you.
We purchased them, and the sheriff's department used them, and used them so well that they no longer work correctly. And so we haven't had them in place for over four years. Yeah. But we had, we had security cameras that we could move around from location to location, and over time, the cameras no longer worked.
Okay. I think I remember you talking about those at one time.
And this is a different type of technology.
We're just updating them.
We're updating them, and we're using the asset forfeiture funds for them.
And I am pleased to see that the Bringle Terrace signage is going to be updated, and Alta Vista Gardens will be very happy to see that their signage will be on there as well. So, thank you.
Anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'll move that we adopt the fiscal year 2013-14 first quarter financial report.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next thing on our agenda is our, we have a public hearing. It's the amended and restated acquisition disposition and development agreement with Care West Vista Way LLC and Vista Properties LLC. And John Meyer is going to take that, and our attorney, John Stone.
Thank you. Mayor and members of the city council, for your consideration tonight is the amended and restated acquisition disposition and development agreement, commonly referred to as the ARADA. First phase of the original agreement with North County Ford directed the commission to purchase the Ford dealership and lease it back to North County Ford. This phase was completed in May of 2010. The proposed ARADA will restructure the agreement moving forward, and significantly reduce the successor agency's financial contribution to the project. As outlined in the staff report, the major points of the agreement include: the sale of the existing Ford dealership site back to North County Ford for the original purchase price of $10.5 million. The sale of 242 Vista Village, site of the former motel, to the developer for the appraised value of $680,000. The developer will then have three years to secure a letter of intent for a Tier 1 dealership. As provided for in the ARADA, a Tier 1 dealership is defined as Toyota, Honda, Nissan, Volkswagen, Hyundai, Kia, Chevrolet, Lexus, or Mercedes. If a second dealership is secured, the city will agree to vacate and make improvements to the Vista Village East Vista Way intersection. If the developer cannot secure a letter of intent, the city has a one-year option to buy back 242 Vista Village for the same $680,000. The ARADA meets the intent of the original agreement by preserving the existing dealership and providing an opportunity for a second dealership. This agreement, this agreement completely reimburses the commission's original purchase and eliminates the successor agency's $4 to $5 million obligation under the original agreement. Based on the fiscal analysis, the ARADA provides the successor agency an additional $1.5 to $2.3 million in net present value compared to the existing agreement. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
I don't have any speakers. So do I have any questions from the council? See none, because we've all read this in detail here. I would look for a motion.
I would move to approve this item.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Aguilera.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Include, closing the public hearing, please.
Close the public hearing?
Yes.
I would include in my motion the close the public hearing.
And did you second it?
I did.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Please cash your ballots, please cash your votes. That motion passes unanimously, with Councilmember Cole's absent today, excused. So with that, that's all of the items on our agenda, except for our oral communications. And we have a few oral communications here. So, we'll start with Michael, is it Dale Hoover?
I can start now?
Yes.
First, I'd like to thank you all for giving me a moment of your time to speak. I'm actually speaking on regards to the stoplights, stop sign, I mean, that was installed on Shadow Ridge and Live Oak Drive. I actually personally went out there. I feel that it's not safe to have the stop signs in place, even though they were recently in place. On the 5th of last week, I personally went out there and surveyed between the times of 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM to study the actual intersection there. And I had surveyed that approximately 1,200 vehicles had passed through between that time. Seventeen of them were using the left-hand turn, which was recently put in place there. And 47 vehicles didn't even bother to stop at the stop sign, and then another 82 slowly passed through. So, I feel that it's actually unsafe to have the stop signs there now, because now there are people that are breaking the law now, because they're driving through and they're not using the stop signs.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Thomas Schenzler. Is that close?
Yes. Hi, my name is Thomas Schenzler, and I live in the Shadow Ridge area of Vista. I also want to voice my concern about the stop signs that were installed on the intersection of Shadow Ridge Drive and Live Oaks Road. Last week, or last, last meeting, I was talking about the economic impact that those stop signs are having, about $500,000 a year. Today, I want to give a few examples. My personal commute is about 30 minutes and 21 miles. Out of those 21 miles, four miles are on surface roads, and 17 miles are on the freeway. It takes me about 14 minutes to travel those four miles on surface roads, while it takes me about 16 minutes to travel the 16 miles on the freeway. me about 16 minutes to travel the 16 miles on the freeway. This is just an example that shows that travel times on, on surface roads do have a major impact on total commute times. We spend billions of dollars improving our freeways to save a few minutes for commuters. On the other hand, we increase travel times by installing unnecessary stop signs and traffic lights. I want to give another example, the freeway 78 expansion. The highway 78 expansion is projected to cost about $1.1 billion. It is also projected to save about 12,000 average daily person hours. So, 12,000 average daily person hours are going to be saved by that project. So, let's divide the $1.1 billion that are going to be spent, divide by those 12,000 average daily person hours, we come up to a cost of $91,000 per average daily person hour saved. So, we spent all this money, and then on the other hand, we are just adding 40 average daily person hours, time lost, by installing those stop signs. I just want to make one additional point here. In the interest of transparency and openness in government, I would like to ask the council members if they have a distinct personal advantage in a decision, they should either recuse themselves from voting on that matter, or they should state that they have that advantage. Thank you.
Thank you. Giselle Schenzler.
Hello. So, as you know, I'm also here to talk about the stop sign, and I'm not going to re-say what we talked about last time, but I did want to kind of give you some snapshots of the feedback that we've gotten since the stop sign has been put up. So, just a couple of quotes that I pulled out. You all probably have an information packet in front of you that's got the petitions, as well as the in-person signatures. It also has a letter from a Vista resident, which is really good, that's why I put it in there, and then an email that I'll refer to later. So, just top line, I live in the apartment complex right across the street from the stop sign. I deal with insomnia, and the increased traffic noise is not helping. Not to mention, the placement of the stop sign is itself an absolutely, is absolutely unnecessary. Please recon, another quote, "Please reconsider the necessity and effectiveness of this decision, which aids a minority," keeping in mind the people coming out of Live Oak versus the 13,000 going on Shadow Ridge, "and inconveniencing and costing the majority of the city of Vista." So, little quotes, they're all in there. You can read them as you, as you will. The other big thing that I found out, as I did a little more research after the last meeting, is that you were misled. You were led to believe that the Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association had voted and approved the stop sign, and they had not. I went back, I dug, I even, in there, the last page, you'll see an email from the management company saying, "No, you're right. It was never voted on." It was basically handman shake, you know, on the side. So, it was never officially voted on from the Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association. I'm part of Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association, so I want to make sure that we're being represented here, because we've got 200 people that are saying, "We don't want it," but you have five guys that decided, not guys, you know, board members, that decided that they wanted it, and, and nobody had a say. So, I just urge you to think about that in the future. It is what it is, and we're going to evaluate it, and we're going to see what it is, but urge you to consider that, because I think Cliff Kaiser had asked last time, when he originally decided about the stop sign, he asked for that confirmation on that, on that approval, and it was never provided. And so, a decision was made without him. And then, the other thing is, the South Vista community, who are they representing? It's, it's a club that everybody gets to. I can give you, give them 100 bucks and be in their club, and that's not really representing a development or an association, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Say something.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I, for one, would like to see this come back, because I think there was a lot of information that was probably left out, and I think that if, in time, some of my concerns that I had originally are going to come to fruition, so I would like to see this come back at some point in the future. I know we gave it six months, and I'm willing to wait. Hopefully, nothing bad happens between now and then, but I definitely want to see this come back, and I thank you for your efforts.
Councilmember Rigby.
I, I agree with Councilman Aguilera. I, I would like to see it come back as well. But regarding the Shadow Ridge Homeowners Association, we got word from their Board of Directors, and we can only, speaking for myself, I can only trust that when we receive word from the Board of Directors, that they took it upon themselves to discuss with their membership and their residents. Whether they did or not, I, I think that's kind of on them, but when, when we were soliciting a feedback on this issue, to have the Homeowners Association Board of Directors say that they had approved it, or majority of the board had approved it, we can only assume that they talked with the membership, and if they didn't, I was not aware of that, neither were my colleagues, that it was just the board that took a vote without discussion. So, just for informational purposes on that.
Just to clarify with the Shadow Ridge Board, I don't think there was a formal vote, so you're not going to find it in their minutes, however, there was consensus, or a majority of the board, that supported this going forward, and we heard from Jim Fraker, who is basically the general manager of the Shadow Ridge HOA, to confirm that.
So, I, I agree if we can revisit this.
Okay. Our next speaker is Mehdi Chitari.
It's Mehdi.
Chitari, did I say it right?
Yes, you did. Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mehdi Chitari. I'm the owner of the classic chairs, the car lot, right in 78. I just had one question. There was a, last weekend, a car dealer from El Cajon came here and just had a, you know, a weekend sale in front of Walmart. I was just wondering why it was that, because there's, you know, some used car dealer and one new car dealer in Vista. I guess, you know, we have a right, you know, to sell cars here, we just, you know, we pay all the taxes, everything, you know. I don't think it's fair, you know, somebody from El Cajon bring, you know, cars here just to sell because the Vista, you know, I guess people just, you know, should buy a car from us, or if they can go buy someplace else, but I think that is not fair. That's all I'm saying.
I, I wasn't aware of it, so I don't know a lot about it, but they probably had to get a permit, I'm assuming.
They did.
They did. Walmart gets a permit, whether it's annually or twice a year, two, three times a year maybe, to hold these tent sales for three-day periods of time.
You know, Walmart is the one get $4,000, $5,000. I guess the city gets only about 100 bucks, 200 bucks, whatever, you know, the permit and every cost, but still, I don't think it's fair because, you know, if Walmart's the one, excuse me, was doing it for free, you know, it's different, but they're the one making the money. I mean, they did in Oceanside too. They offered me, I didn't go, and I talked to, you know, people in Oceanside, they kind of could stop them. City now is my town, I mean Vista is my town, I guess my suggestion is, you know, put a stop on that. If Walmart wants to do that, because, hey, you know, they're the one making money, you know, at least we should get, you know, a chance, or we do them, if not, not, because I'm the guy, you know, paying the rent, you know, paying the taxes here on the permit.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Could you go do that in San Marcos, or could you go to El Cajon?
I really haven't tried.
I was wondering.
It, it could, you know, the people, the people put this together, like a two or three people, basically, they have, you know, organization, a company. They, they basically go set that up, you know, with other vendors, like a Kmart or Walmarts, or anybody, you know, they're doing them in their parking lot, you know. I mean, there's people go there, they talk to them, they just offer them some money, you know, but usually, you know, to get a permit from the city is easy. Therefore, yes, I can, but I really don't want to do that, you know.
Right.
It doesn't make sense, you know, take my cars from here, someplace else where we can, you know, which I can do them now, right here in my dealership.
I suppose it's like free enterprise. I'm guessing, but I'm thinking it's like, you know, if you want, if somebody wants to do it, if they come and get a permit, I don't know that we can stop that unless, you know, because it's, it's free enterprise. You could do it in, you could do it in another city too, or you could maybe do it at Walmart. Why don't you approach them? You could be the one to do it next year.
I'll pay rent, you know, everything in my dealership. Why should I go pay Walmart $5,000 for three days, you know?
Oh, I see what you're saying. They, okay, they pay money to do that, huh?
Competitors out.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's a free enterprise, but, I mean, if you look at the other hand, I mean, even the cars they sell, you know, from the people, you know, in Vista, even the percentage of taxes, I guarantee you guys don't even get that. I mean, the city of Vista, they don't get that. If you want, I can just bring, you know, more paperwork later, you know, and show you how it works.
Well, I don't know.
Sure. Anyway, that was just, you know, suggest.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, with that, that brings us to our remarks at the end, and so, do I start with you, Amanda?
I have nothing to report, thank you.
Nothing to report this evening?
Councilwoman Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I wanted to just let everybody on council know about the billboards that got approved in Carlsbad, so, just letting people know. But I did, did want to go ahead and talk about our Veterans Day. I know Councilwoman Rigby was there and joined me. They had a great, it was at Tri-City Christian, and they had a great celebration there, and it was, it was a fun experience, and I really enjoyed it, and there were some great speeches that were made. I believe his name was Abe Thompson, right? Really good speaker, is a parent there, and retired Marine, and they honored our service members very well, so I was really proud to be there. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, Veterans Day was yesterday, and so I'd like to pay tribute also to all of our veterans, our active military personnel and their families, especially those in the North County region, and our adopted Marine unit, HMLA 369. I would thank them all for their sacrifices that they've made for our country and for all of, ooh, going in and out, and for all of us. On Saturday, November 23rd, the San Diego Humane Society will be at Wildwood Park, and they're on the corner of Civic Center Drive and East Vista Way, at that park there, and they're going to be providing affordable vaccinations and pet licensing from 10 until noon that day. And so, this is our last city council meeting before Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving to our staff and to our community, and take note that the city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday, and Thanksgiving Day and the following day, November 29th. And then finally, because our next meeting isn't until December 10th, I also want to mention that some of the holiday events that are going on downtown that are scheduled for early December, the VVVA's Winter Fest will take place on Wednesday, December the 4th, at the Main Street Farmers Market. The Chambers Christmas Parade, which runs along South Santa Fe and Main Street, it's on Saturday, December the 7th, and the Vista Community Clinic's Holiday Home Tour will take place on Sunday, December the 8th. So, those three events, there's details for those if you want to look on our city's website, which is www.cityofvista.com, right?
Correct.
And then I wanted to mention one other thing. The inland, from Sandag, when I was there, Transportation last week, the inland rail trail is, as a proposed, proposed 21-mile Class 1 facility that's located in the cities of Oceanside, Vista, San Marcos, and Escondido, it runs all the way along the rail corridor. And in August, Sandag completed the environmental document for the rail trail from San Marcos to Vista segment, which is a seven-mile Class 1 bike path within the cities of San Marcos, Oceanside Vista, and the county. So, the preliminary engineering for San Marcos to Vista has been recently completed, and additional $30.3 million is needed to complete the final design, the right-of-way acquisition, and the construction phases, and construction of the San Marcos to Vista segment will be completed in phases, with Phase 1 in the city of San Marcos starting as early as next spring. So, and Transportation recently approved 30, the 30.3 million dollars to go forward on that, so I thought that was kind of important for the acquisition and the final design and construction phases, so that's kind of exciting, so I thought I would put that in there. And with that, if there's anything else, Patrick, our city manager might have a report.
Just a couple of things. The city's asking for community input on the needs and priorities for the Community Development Block Grant for the next five-year plan.
You are?
Get it closer. So, then again, the city's asking for the community's input for the needs and priorities for the Community Development Block Grant five-year plan, which is coming up. There's a meeting tomorrow night, Wednesday, at the Townsite Center at 6:00 p.m., and if you're not able to attend that, there's an online survey that we'd appreciate the community taking, and that can be found at our website, cityofvista.com. And last time we met, I reported on some projects that were in process, and I just wanted to let you know that two of the projects have been complete, and that is the Vista Village Medians Project. If you drive by, the medians are now landscaped with the trees and the rocks. And also on North Drive, the Medians Streetscape Project is complete as well, so just wanted to give you a heads up.
I think we have a groundbreaking for our, down in South Santa Fe, coming up in December, if I remember right.
That's correct. The Paseo Santa Fe project will have a groundbreaking.
The Paseo Santa Fe project, which is coming up, that's an exciting project, so. City Attorney, do you have any comments?
Simply happy Thanksgiving to one and all.
Thank you. Mr. Piper, and how about our city clerk, Marcy Killian?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. With that, we are adjourned at 6:52. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.